Here we go, City of Aspen. We're having our regular council meeting tonight for October 28th. Thank you to those who are here in person and thank you to those who are watching online. I think we have a few character costumes in the room as folks have been getting ready for the Halloween celebrations on Friday.
Oop, sorry.
Thank you. So pardon me with that. I will call the meeting to order and Nicole, will you call the roll?
Counselor Benadetti.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Guth.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Richards.
Here. Thank you very much. We have no scheduled public appearances this morning and so we will move directly into citizen comments and petitions. Time to address counsel on your concerns on items not on the agenda. And we just ask that you identify yourself for the public record and keep your minute comments to about three minutes. And who would like to speak first?
Sir?
Please come forward. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is David Eisenstadt. Here with me is my wife Nina. Several of you may remember that we came before city council back in January and we're actually here for the same reason tonight. And that is because on or about December 22nd, a city water main broke on the street right outside of our house and it flooded about 40% of our home. The entire lower level of the house was submerged under about a foot of water. We lost, and I explained this to counsel at the time, we lost all our furniture, furnishings, clothing, personal items, family items, business records, work files, all of it destroyed because of the flood. I should say that, you know, this has been our only home for over 25 years. For us, it's not a vacation property or second home. It's where we live and it's where all our stuff is. Because of the flood, our home was uninhabitable for months on end while the disaster mitigation and the reconstruction process went ahead. You should understand the house, that lower level had to be taken down to the studs to dry it out, to remediate for contamination and to rebuild. So needless to say, our house is, you know, was in a state of flux for months and we are pretty much turned upside down since the flood occurred in December. For us, the stress has been absolutely unrelenting. When we met with counsel in January, every member of counsel committed to making us whole, to having our back, to doing the right thing to make us whole for our losses. And we've relied on that representation ever since and we're relying on it still. I think John, you were here at the time, Bill, Sam, you were all at the council table. I'm sure you remember the commitments that were made and what was discussed at that time. The reason we're here tonight is because we understand that counsel is going to take up our situation during executive session. So we thought it would be important for us to be here to bring you up to date on significant developments and of course to respond to any questions that you might have. The most important thing to let you know is we submitted a detailed statement of our personal property losses and all of the related expenses. This is what it looks like. I'd hold it up higher but it's too heavy to be honest with you. We submitted these to Tyler Kristoff, who's the city's point person on this.
We've hit the three-minute mark on public comment. If you want to finish up briefly and then we will be discussing it this evening.
I'm sorry I took so long. I'll try. This document itemizes every single possession that was destroyed in the flood. It provides photographic evidence of every item and it prices out every item. We thought that was something important to do. It took a lot of work to do it. We actually had to hire a valuation expert, but we think that was money well spent because we thought it was important that the city have a complete accounting, an accurate accounting of all of our losses. I'm sure Tyler will confirm the fact that he has everything he needs and we've been responsive to all of the information requests that have come our way from the city. So I'm really glad that the city is turning its attention tonight to our situation. I mean, 10 months have gone by and to put it bluntly, we haven't seen a dollar of reimbursement from the city. As I said back in January, this is a serious infrastructure failure and it caused serious harm.
We are going to be discussing this in executive session tonight and we have now exceeded the public comment time. I appreciate your efforts bringing it forward and we will be hearing from our staff and our attorney and continuing to discuss this. We've received your letters over time and again, appreciate you being here, but we need to move on from in public comment.
I can appreciate that and thank you for your time and for listening so patiently. It's been a long and arduous process and we're here to respond to any questions or be available to counsel.
If we have any follow-up after our meeting tonight, we'll have staff get in touch with you, with questions.
Very well. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. It's, I think we have some public comment online, so let me ask, is there further public comment in the room? Charlie, please come up and give us your name.
My name's Charlie Tarver and I can't be here today. I'm here for one thing, but I can't be in this room without saying, Gideon Kaufman, you're a good man and you will be missed. I mean, I don't know how many times I sat in this room for one of 30 different boards without Aaron Gideon. And you know what? He's a good man and I'm glad he's, I'm glad he was in my life. I've always defended city council, housing authority, the city government. 30 years of sitting on boards and every task force I ever could sign up for made me think that everything was good in this city. And you always heard, oh, they're this or that. The last few months, I've run into, I've understood the view from the other side to where you ask a simple question and you get Mongolia is this place that I haven't been. Recently, I live in an R.R. unit and I'm going to be in trouble now because I piss off the housing authority, which isn't, it's not who you want to piss off if you live in affordable housing, but here it goes. For the good of the community, I heard our neighbor was selling their unit. I said, I would like to buy it. I believe I qualified for it. They said, you don't, you can't buy it. And I just said, what rule allows them to sell it in this particular manner? Okay? And they said, you can't buy it. I received four, I just got yelled at today. You've contacted us four times. Every time I've never gotten an answer to the question I asked. What rule allows it to be sold this manner? That's all I want to know. Not necessarily for me being able to buy it, but for you or you or you being able to buy it. I wrote a lot of the rules that we live by now. I've sat on many boards with you. We wrote the rules. I want to know how they're being enforced and how they're not being enforced. And I was told, basically, you don't count, sit down and shut up. And that is just, it's not a good look. And in general, the housing authority is a wonderful, God, I've supported them forever. But if other people get this, get this answer from them, I now know why they're upset with them. This is disrespectful. I mean, when you ask someone a question and they said, I asked, what rule can we sell the house using John Doyle as a broker? And they said, you can't buy it, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter if I can, you know, I want to know what rule allows John Doyle that's made up to be the broker. That's all I ask.
Well, let's get, what is the unit number you're interested in, Charlie?
It's not for me. I just, it's, Victoria's at Bleeker, Unit C, or 124. And I've contacted them and they basically said, we answered your question. We sent you four emails. Sending me an email saying, we answered it last week is not a new email. It's not another answer.
Okay. We'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gideon Kaufman, good man.
Additional public comment, items not on tonight's agenda.
Mike Maple. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here, Mike.
Earlier this year, you all agreed to take a look at some fee waiver, fee deferral and waiver programs on, in my view, for as long as, long as there's been any sort of fee waiver and housing mitigation issues, the occupancy of free market units by qualified residents has never been in any way acknowledged or accepted. On October 1st, I sent all of you as city council people and staff a note or a proposal to which I received absolutely no acknowledgement or feedback. So I am here again to submit this to you and request that you consider my proposal and suggestion. And as a citizen, it would be nice if, you know, you got some sort of acknowledgement for your, for your efforts and your, and your input. Secondly, a couple of things on the agenda tonight. I noticed that you have a couple of historic designation call-ups. Sounds great, but I have, I have basically one comment on those things. In this community, we provide phenomenal incentives for historic preservation development. In this case, I can't understand all of the incentives that are provided, but in one case, there's two TDRs that are offered. TDRs have significant impact on the community depending on where they land. They are not free. They are not impact, impactless. And so I ask you to carefully consider the impacts that you are, you are proposing to foist on other, other neighborhoods. Similarly, one of these applications calls for basically lot line or setback to setback development. These massive basements are a significant impact to neighbors and the community, the amount of time it takes to build these projects. And in my view, they should not be, they should not be allowed. Building basements should not be any larger than, than the footprint of the building itself. Lastly, for who knows how many times, probably 20, 25, you are considering a demolition allotment denial and issuance. I'd like to thank Chris Bryant and his client for a very thorough analysis of the situation and, you know, once again, say to you that this program is an absolute disaster for the community, for the staff's time, and for me and others as property owners. It creates a great deal of stress with absolutely no demonstrated benefit that staff has been able to communicate in the two and a half years now that this program has existed. So while I suggest that you grant the, the request here to grant a demolition allotment, a much better result is to get rid of this program. Secondly, the way the staff has asked that this situation be resolved is to grant a 2026 allotment as opposed to creating a new allotment by borrowing from the future.
Mike, your time is up.
By borrowing from the future, you are creating greater stress and impacts on private property owners. This is a horrible program. Please get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We do have some improvements and simplifications in the work with ComDev at this point, but we appreciate your comments.
Can I add 12 seconds?
No, Charlie, I'm sorry. This is...
I'm for the, I like the person selling it, I like the person buying it. This is for the rest of the world is what I'm putting myself at risk for. They're both going to hate me, but...
Thank you. Are there other members of the public here who would like to make public comment tonight in the room? There being none. Javier, can you turn on Ryan Mahoney for public comment? Ryan, there you go. We can hear you now. You've unmuted. Thank you.
Great. Mayor Richards and counsel, I'll just take a quick moment, but sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm actually still at the airport following a task force meeting to discuss some of the original or some of the new concepts for the terminal and ground transportation center. But I wanted to come on tonight just to invite you all and also for the benefit of the public, this Thursday evening, October 30th, from 5 to 7, we, which the "we" is staff and our design team, will be at the Hoffman Hotel and it's open to the public. We will have Spanish interpretation as well and it'll be a good time to provide some feedback, see what the progress is thus far. I do want to emphasize that we are very much at the beginning of the process. So if the public are interested in learning more about the airport design, this is a very good time to get involved and you'll hear and get to see what the task force members did today, which are some of those initial concepts for terminal and ground transportation. So I just want to also flag that we did have an initial meeting on October 15th in Aspen at the firehouse and this one will have Down Valley and Besalbit will certainly be back up Valley for a subsequent open house as well. So that's all I had to say and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. And, you know, I'm still just getting used to your name as one of the assistant county managers. So thank you for inviting us and the community to the Hoffman on Thursday night. All right. So we have Francis. Are you here to speak online or? I don't really see a microphone coming up. I see your hand. I see you're unmuting yourself or no, that's felon. Unmute your microphone. There you go, Francis.
Hi there.
Hi.
Mayor Richards.
Three minutes.
Members of city council. Yeah, I had some notes that I wanted to read. Here it is. Right now, I'm answering a, a survey from the Aspen Daily News about how great their coverage is and their commentary is. I was reading Steve Skinner talking about science and science fiction. I think he's reading something over my shoulder. I still think the Aspen Writers Network, Aspen Words and all the opportunities we have to be able to communicate and change things from the Aspen spotlight is, is quite a resource. And I'm really privileged to be part of the Aspen APCHA. And I think that the improvements that are going on for our housing opportunities here in Aspen are continuing to grow. I'd like to see something happen with our restaurants. I'm concerned about what's going on with the Yogi space, but I'm not really at, I'm not really disposed to be able to take part in it since I have a, a pretty good job right now and, you know, I like to write science fiction and I've sent some stuff to Substack about, well, a hidden division here in Aspen that is affecting us all. Let's see what happens with that. And thank you. I'd love to see a, I'm not used to this kind of thing. I'd love to see a, an Aspen tee pad or some kind of thing in the armory for cannabis consumption lounge, something like the Hunter Thompson's old psychologist club that we were looking at. And thanks for listening. I'm not really prepared for this kind of thing, but, you know, you'll see me in the future as I hope to see you in the future. And thanks for addressing any environmental issues that we have going on too and the continuing curse of the Utes and the entrance to Aspen. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Francis, for your comments. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak to us? Just raise your hand symbol and we'll let you into the meeting. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands go up and there's no one else in the room. I will close the public comment section of this meeting for the public comments and move on to council members and mayor's comments. And this is comments, not board reports. We'll do that next. Thank you. Nothing today, Bill?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I'll keep it short and sweet. Mosquitoes have been reported for the first time in Iceland. Iceland and Antarctica were the only places on earth where mosquitoes did not exist. Now it's only Antarctica. I think everybody knows that means the planet's warming and I'm glad that we are part of a city government that takes climate change seriously. Thanks.
Thank you for that, John. I do have board reports in a moment. I don't really have too much on personal matters other than to say that it is a true loss for our community as others have mentioned today to lose Gideon Kaufman. It's, it's a small town when you kind of know people as they pass and you kind of know all of them. And I know it hurts in our neighborhood, especially when it's an unexpected accident like that. And I had said before, I first met Gideon when I was working at the super restaurant in 79, you know? So it's someone I've known wrangling about with issues and working on things together and looking for the best for our community, I think is something that he embodied and a lot of friendship and he's a great deal of respect throughout the community. So it's just a sad event for all of us. So those are council members and mayor's comments. Do we have any, pardon? Wait, wait, no, oh.
You're good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you're good, you're good. I was thinking of the other part and then I got confused. I would like to point out that the election is coming up really quickly. If you have not yet mailed or turned your ballot in, tomorrow, Wednesday's probably getting a little too late to mail it in. But we have a lot of important issues on the ballot, a lot of tough decisions for our community, school board members, state issues, everything like that. We'll be talking a little later tonight about our own lumberyard ballot measure, which does not require any tax increases. And just a kind of reminder to be sure and get it in a vote. And now we'll move on to, are there any agenda amendments tonight?
No amendments.
No amendments. Thank you. City manager's comments.
I just wanted to recognize again the budget team for the excellent work getting through the budget and also to say thank you to the council for the back and forth and dialogue that we had throughout those multiple work sessions. I thought it was really healthy. Also wanted to open up and say that if you have any feedback for how to make that process better, we're definitely listening and able to make adjustments, so.
And what was that little afternoon party over there on Park Avenue about, Pete?
Yeah, so today we did get a chance to celebrate some work that was done throughout the course of the summer on Park and Midland area there for a, some work underneath the pavement, putting in some new utility work. We also partnered with some other utilities to get some other infrastructure in, in place as well as some stormwater management as well. So everything is now repaved and I believe we put it back together nicely.
Some nice sidewalks there too.
Yep.
You keep hearing from people that say, I almost had to jump off the road because the bus was coming through on that narrow strip. So thank you to our engineering, our construction teams and everyone who had a role in making that happen. So thank you so much on that. We will now come back to the board reports section of the agenda. Who would like to start, Sam?
Really quick, Nordic council meeting, really light agenda, just talking with the Meadowwood HOA about using their property for the Nordic Trail and money going towards them and West Buttermilk and Owl Creek, there'll be a new trail alignment at some point, but this year it's the same alignment. So that's all the updates I got for you from Nordic Council.
Thank you for that. Thank you for participating. Bill, anything?
We had a RAFTA meeting, but I don't recall anything of specific note that's worth sort of bringing up now unless you had anything that might trigger my memory.
I think, I think we might have reported on it since then. I'm sorry, I've been looking at the wrong month. I think we reported on RAFTA.
Yeah, perhaps. The busyness of budget season is blurring my memory.
It buzzy season, it really does. There were a lot of meetings last month. I'll, I can cover some of the RAFTA too. You were there, we were both there.
Yes. I think so.
The main thing... The main thing I can tell you from the RAFDA meeting as a follow-up is we have heard that Mike Sampson, Garfield County Commissioner, is trying to go to bat for at least a $250,000 contribution to the Hogback Route. And the last word we had was that they were going to contribute nothing. The budget still isn't finalized, but I guess the mayors of Rifle, Silt, and Newcastle got together with their county commissioners and told them how important that transit is. It still will only cover roughly a quarter of the cost, unfortunately. But we're moving forward and we'll go with that from there. From this side of the table.
All I've got is CML Policy Committee, but you attended that as well.
Yeah, if you'd like to jump in on that.
I can roll through it pretty quick. So CML Policy, CSL Policy Committee meets and we talk about passing bills to, forward to the state. North Glenn had to pass a 1,000-foot requirement regarding sex offender housing proximity to schools. That passed. SLIDA proposed three different bills. They wanted STRs addressed. That passed. Residential vacancy tax passed. And the real estate transfer fee, not a tax, passed. Fort Collins wanted to do background checks on all massage parlors. That passed. Wheat Ridge, looking at the automated vehicle identification systems for traffic. That passed. CML Policy Committee also expanded municipal use. That was mostly about I-70. That was also for Wheat Ridge. And SLIDA wanted to do something about state noise levels because they have very lively downtown live music scene. And they've got an ordinance, state has an ordinance on the books that would really impact their downtown. So they got that passed so that they could have local control over that. And that was it. I have a Rafa meeting on Thursday.
Yeah. And so the process with Colorado Municipal League is that all municipalities have a chance to submit potential legislative ideas for the next session that will begin in January. If they pass through the policy committee, as John described, then the staff will really start identifying who might be opposition, who might carry the bill for them, how it would get reformed and put into a package to take forward. They'll start having conversations with the appropriate departments and agencies in the state and then possibly even the governor's office to see where he might sit on some of these. In the course of a legislative session, they'll see somewhere between 500, 600 bills, I think is the usual estimate. And we will then be later taking position on bills that the legislature are already carrying. So that's what those meetings are about. And so that's all for this time. Let's see, on RAFDA, we did have an opportunity in the past two weeks to entertain the State Transportation Commission. They came up via the Amtrak truck train. And RAFDA picked them up and brought them over and showed them the whole new maintenance facility, all the Glenwood Springs workout. I think it was really well received by the commission members and how well RAFDA was run, how we have a diversity of fuel mixes, how they choose which fuel mixes, things like that. And that's really important because, again, the Transportation Commission makes a lot of allocations on funding in the future. As a result of that visit, and then, you know, maybe it was in the works already, RAFDA did receive an award from the Southwest Energy Coalition, you know, kind of energy award for the green energy choices RAFDA's made. I did attend the Shining Mountain Film Festival that we had at the Wheeler Opera House. Wheeler was a great opportunity. I saw an awful lot of good community members there, people participating who are interested in both our legacy with the Native Americans in this valley and the cultural diversity it brings to town. There was a 21st century, Transportation for the 21st Century Coalition meeting. And we're continuing to look at the various measures that might assist our community with managing congestion growth in the future. It's really important to point out that Fears and Peers, the consulting agency which that group has hired, continues to say that Aspen is really the gold standard of transportation demand management measures that they bring forward to other communities, whether it's bike share and paid parking or the RAFDA bus system, you know, car-to-go, bike trails, e-bikes, all these things. And they're, you know, kind of saying you're getting to a point as a community that you're running out of carrots. And if you want to really start changing behavior, you have to start thinking in terms of what are the disincentives, what are the sticks? And so I think that's something coming close to a point and we'll get to hear more about that. On Friday of last week, I finished the last of a six-session Hearst Seminar for Leadership in the Roaring Fork River Valley. It was a fascinating, non-project-based intellectual discussion with a lot of deep conversation as the institute always stirs about values and priorities and personal sacrifice, what you can put in, how to come authentically to every situation. But it was particularly valuable, I thought, for me, representing the city and myself because it was regional throughout the Colorado River Valley. And hearing from council people from Rifle or Newcastle or Silt and what their hopes and aspirations are, what the ongoing love-hate affair with Aspen is, you know, and these sort of things. So it was really good to create new relationships and people you can talk with in the future. John, you have a question?
I just wanted to add to that because you reminded me that Hearst Leadership Seminar at the Institute, I was actually asked to participate as well. Basically, it was just a Q and A with high school kids from up and down the valley.
That's right.
And it was really great. I might have gotten more out of it than they did. But the concerns that were most prevalent to those high school kids were, number one, they were largely Hispanic, from the Latino community, which I thought was pretty cool. But they were concerned about the ICE raids. And they were also very, very enthusiastic about public transit, especially trains.
Nice, very nice. Appreciate that. We had our ACRA board meeting this morning. They meet once a month. And we had Alex Sanchez as a guest speaker to talk about the immigration issues in the valley and what can we do as citizens and be involved to start assuring a little more security. And in particular, Mr. Sanchez said that they have some door hangers that they are putting out with Spanish and English on both sides, mostly about kind of who to contact and what to do if you or a family member or a neighbor is having some issues. And so the ACRA said they'd like to get a lot of those and distribute them through our businesses, through our workforce. I think the city could step up and get some of those as well to be able to have access. Said the main thing is that 20, 25% of the public have no idea who to call, what to do, what to ask. One of the board members asked the question, well, what if you kind of feel like you're seeing an ICE activity happening in front of you? You know, what should you do? And the answer was, well, if you see masked men in unmarked cars and, you know, no identification, you don't know if they are ICE or if they're robbers or kidnappers, and you should call 911. And you should call the police and tell them you see some sort of activity that is suspect and you don't know what's going on, those sort of measures. So this is really becoming a concern. Alex said they thought there had been about 90 people in the Roaring Fork Valley itself who've been picked up and swept away with ICE and that they're kind of ramping up across the west slope. He gave a particular case of an individual who has been in the country for 20 years and is a legitimate green card worker, no criminal record, who was picked up and detained for over three days. And how their organization is trying to spool up lawyers after, well, lawyers for case after case, being able to give people information in Aurora, in the detention facilities, and how to potentially reach people who you've lost contact with. I think this is very disturbing for all of us because it's very unconstitutional to just nab people without any sort of documentation or a day in court or respecting their basic human rights and constitutional rights. ProPublica has reported that over 170 US citizens have now been wrongfully detained, taken away from their work, their families, their jobs, and had to fight for access to even prove their own legality. So this is getting to be quite a problem. Those are all the meetings I have done in the past 10 days. Plus our own regulars. So that's it for board reports. And we will move on to the rest of our agenda, if I can find the page. Although, there is one last thing. I did just stop out briefly at the airport this afternoon for the visioning session that was being held. I think there'll be far greater visuals and information available at the Hoffman Hotel on Thursday night in the mid-valley. But they were having, you can't really zoom in too much, three different terminal plans and the layout for the transportation and giving people ideas of the elevations that would exist at the airport and are very vigorously pursuing public input. So I thought that was an interesting meeting to take a look at and I hope our public does continue to participate in that item. So now we're back to the rest of the agenda, if I can find that. I apologize. Now we will move on to our consent calendar. And we have Resolution Number 142 and 146, Series of 2025. The CMGC contract plus Design Services contract for the ARC renovations. As we all know, the ARC is getting a little older now. It was started construction around 2001, opened not too long after that. But there's a whole series of different improvements and work that's going to be done there. Does anybody have any comments on that item or like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 142 and 146, Series of 2025, CMGC Contract Design Services Contract, ARC Renovations.
Seconded.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. If there's any further discussion, otherwise. Nicole, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benediti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Rhodes.
Mayor Richards.
Gratefully, yes. Thank you guys for all your hard work out there at the ARC. And we now will move into the Notice of Call-Ups section of our agenda. These are opportunities for council should there need to be a review of the work of HPC. We've received the full memo packet with the minutes from our HPC meetings and the application, everything like that. The first one is Notice of Call-Up is 504 West Hallam Street, Historic Preservation Resolution Number 10. So I guess if we'll go over this briefly and then see where the council stands.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Gillian White, Aspen's Historic Preservation Officer, Principal Planner. And this evening, I'm bringing before you two Notice of Call-Ups. The first one is for property located at 504 West Hallam Street. On September 10th of this year, by a vote of four to zero, the Historic Preservation Commission approved Resolution Number 10 of Series 2025. The resolution grants conceptual development plan approval for a certificate of appropriateness for major development with additional requests for relocation, a setback variation, and the request for a recommendation to council regarding the creation of two transferable development rights certificates. The overall scope of work associated with this project includes the restoration of the historic footprint of the resource, restoration of the front facade, demolition of nonhistoric additions, demolition of the detached garage, relocation of the resource to the five-foot side yard setback, and construction of a rear addition with garage access off of Fourth Street. The approved resolution includes conditions related to the details of the setback variance, floor area calculations related to the creation of two TDRs, and details on the location of mechanical equipment. These are conditions that are typical of a conceptual plan review. Within this resolution, the HPC also provided a positive recommendation to council regarding the creation of two TDRs. The requests for TDRs will come back before council at a later date. To conclude, this Notice of Call-Up, staff recommends Aspen City Council uphold HPC's Resolution Number 10 of Series 2025, which requires no action on your part, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. I have just a couple of questions. I'm familiar with the size of TDRs in the county. They're 1,500 square feet each. That's not the same size as the city. What are the size of these?
It's 250 square feet.
250 square feet. Thank you very much on that. And then, as you just described it, that they have to come back to council for the TDRs. But is that then discretionary? Or would this action of not calling it up cement the TDRs to come in the future?
That, it's not discretionary unless they were to change something for their final plan. But if they changed it that drastically, they would need to come back through a conceptual plan review.
I just want to say, well, one, I think Ms. White is correct that if they change something, that will trigger another review potentially. But it does require an ordinance for you to grant a TDR. So that will come back before you. I think that, you know, certainly HPC gets to make a recommendation. That's what this is, is a recommendation to you. That is not necessarily what's before you here today. This would be your opportunity to review what HPC's decision has been on this particular site-specific development plan. So it will come back before you. I don't necessarily agree that you're bound by HPC's recommendation, which is what was actually part of this particular approval. But it will come back to you as an ordinance, that will require two readings before it's approved.
That's why I was kind of wondering the process. And as a standard, anything approved by an ordinance is subject to initiative and petition. To put it as a referendum? I thought anything we do by ordinance can be put on a ballot by initiative.
Most things, you're correct. I would have to do some research to answer that question.
Not that I'm expecting anyone to do that on this because they don't like our decision one way or the other, but it is generally the rule that anything we do by ordinance is. Okay. John?
Yeah, I just had a question about the TDRs. Is that because they're not using all their FAR? Or?
That is correct. I mean, it can vary depending on the situation. In this situation, yes, they have unused floor area that they're wanting to create TDRs from.
All right, thanks for explaining that.
I just wanted to prod a little bit further on that, just to make sure that we're all on the same page in light of the public comment that was made earlier tonight. Gillian, could you please very briefly describe sort of the process of severing TDRs from historic assets? And especially in light of the fact that it seemed like he was implying that it was a reward and a benefit or an incentive of historic restoration, which is not what I would categorize it as. So I'd just ask for you to talk to that point just briefly.
Yeah, so, and what he may have been referring to is that the TDRs are under our Historic Preservation Benefit section in the code. So it's phrased as a benefit. And the way that it's phrased that way is because we're trying to limit the amount of development on the property to better preserve the historic resource. And so by severing that floor area, it prevents more development on the property. And so that's the benefit that we're speaking to when we talk about TDRs.
Great. And then, why don't you address on the other side of it where the TDR landing spots may be? Does someone have to go through approval to accept that much more unless they're?
Yes, there is criteria. You have to be an eligible landing site. I don't have that criteria in front of me, but it is spelled out in our code. And so they're required to meet certain criteria to be able to land a TDR on their site. So it's not just anyone can do it.
Not just random. That's what I was kind of thinking. All right. So is there any interesting call-up by any members of the board on this item? No? And do we need an affirmative vote that we're not calling it up or anything? No?
It's no action.
We haven't seen too many of these.
It would only be if you seek to call it up that you would actually have to take formal action.
Okay, thank you. That's the first one there. Then?
All right. And I just switched the screen over to the next property.
Okay.
So this property is located at 406 West Smuggler Street. And this went before the HPC on October 8th of this year. And by a vote of five to zero, they approved Resolution Number 11 of Series 2025. The resolution grants conceptual development plan approval for a certificate of appropriateness for major development with additional requests for relocation, two setback variations, and a floor area bonus. The overall scope of work associated with this project includes demolition of nonhistoric additions, demolition of a detached garage, relocation of the resource five feet into the 10-foot side yard setback, construction of a setback-to-setback subgrade space, and construction of a new two-story detached residence. The approved resolution includes conditions related to The approved resolution includes conditions related to selective demolition with staff and HPC monitor review, the details of the setback variations, the required submittal of a preservation plan prior to permit, and details related to the required financial assurances for relocation. To conclude this notice of call up, staff recommends again that council uphold resolution number 11 of series 2025.
Thank you very much, council members. Any questions on this item? Okay. Any interest in calling it up? Well, I'd just like to say thank you to our staff. And please thank you to the HPC members on our behalf for working so hard on these projects.
I will do, of course.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gillian.
Yeah, I'd say it was pretty clear with the unanimous votes, too.
Yeah. Very good. All right. We have no first reading of ordinances. We do have a, no public hearings. But we do have an action item, which is resolution 145 and resolution 148. Two action items.
Good evening, Mayor Richards and City Council, Haley Hart, Long Range Planner. Chris Bryan is the representative for the property under resolution 145, series of 2025, which is 325 Park Avenue. They are requesting a demolition allotment. I believe Chris is going to say a few things on behalf of the property owners and then I will do afterwards.
Sure. Thank you very much. I'm before this counsel yet again on a demolition allotment. I think Ms. Benidetti is the only person who's not heard my spiel on this. Although I did forward her some public comment that I've sent to others. Just so everybody understands, and I don't want to belabor the point that I've tried to make for the last three years about how this program, while well-intentioned, is no longer necessary. I was very proud of counsel in the past year or so for adopting the waste diversion protocols. I think that really does solve for the issues that this moratorium era program tried to in a somewhat ham-handed way. I think that the residential design standards make it to where any new construction is going to be more environmentally friendly. I think that building IQ is important for that. All of those things solve for what the demolition allotment cap was intended to do. But now, as you heard from Mr. Maple during public comment, what this really does now, it's really a relic or an artifact of a bygone era before those new programs and policies were enacted. And I want to congratulate the city because I think that the waste diversion process and procedure and dedicated staff that has to work on that, I think they're really doing a really good job of diverting things away from the landfill. And there are a lot of properties, and this is one of them. My client's property is one of them, that is not ecologically friendly. We should encourage people, or at least not stand in the way of property owners who are eager to build more environmentally friendly places. Because right now, the house that's there now is not. And the artificial demolition cap that you have enacted in 2022, and despite, I think, valiant efforts to repeal it, still remains. And it causes problems. And there's a lot of people out there that you probably don't know about, who see the cap, make a call to staff, find out that the cap's already been exhausted, the six have already been given out for that year, and they don't do anything about it. They don't hire a lawyer. They don't hire a land planner. So is what I would encourage this counsel to do is to really take a hard look at what you're trying to accomplish with the artificial limit of six caps of demolition allotments per year. I don't think it solves what you wanted it to, to solve. And your new policies do solve that. So with that sermon out of the way, let's talk about the property at issue. When my client applied through his architect for a demolition allotment, he was informed that the property was not eligible because there were no more 2025 demolition allotments to give out. He then noticed that he had a 14-day appeal window. I wrote, I think, a pretty exhaustive letter about this policy, about why I think it's problematic from a legal perspective, why I think it's poor policy, and why in this particular circumstance, a demolition allotment should be granted. I have been very pleased to work with staff and the city attorney's office on avoiding a contentious issue like we've had in the past, where we've had to go to court sometimes, where we've had to have heated appeal hearings. I think that the resolution you have in front of you is a good solution for this particular client and for this applicant. And so I'm not going to stand in the way of that. I just wish that my client and many people else, other people who own property in Aspen didn't have to incur the expense and time to do this. They should be available if you comply with all the other policies, including waste diversion, residential design, building IQ, all of which you'll see on page two of the resolution that's proposed are criteria and conditions for approval. So I, I am not going to let the good be the enemy of the perfect here. I do think that we wouldn't have to be here at all if the demolition caps were repealed or at least increased from six, so that you don't have this problem on a recurring basis. But be that as it may, if you do reject the resolution, which I hope you don't, then I am prepared to go into the appeal process that we have scheduled for tonight and which will be sent quasi-judicially. I hope that's not necessary and that this resolution proposed by staff and supported by the applicant gets unanimous approval so that we can move on.
Yep. Thank you, Chris. I think you, you may be aware, we've had a work session on the demolition permits not very long ago. We're looking to some processes that make it far simpler, that you do not need a denial to make an appeal for future ones. But our board did stand firm as a majority of kind of liking the program as it is now and wanting to let it play out a little more. But we do hope to make it a lot easier so that if someone is seeking a permit and it's into the next year, they won't have to hire an attorney.
I, I would be happy to forsake this part of my practice. I have other things to keep me busy.
I understand. You've got a lot of other more interesting clients, I'm sure. But let me see what.
Mine's very interesting for the record.
Let me, let me find other council member comments. John, and then we'll come to others.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Just wanted to thank Chris for his comments. I appreciate them. I would like to say that the program is problematic. It does have some issues. But one of the reasons why we pursued it was not just to keep waste out of the landfill or to, yeah. It was also a quality of life situation. Aspen residents have been hammering us for years about the noise of construction and how long projects take. So this was an effort to not only slow the pace and scale of deconstruction, but also, it also offers a path for, you, you don't require a demo permit if you can save 40% of the structure. And I would also point out that nobody has been denied a demo permit yet.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up first, Bill?
I haven't raised my hand yet.
Okay. Maybe it was Sam. I thought.
I was just thinking. We're wearing very similarly colors.
Oh, that's true. Jeez.
I didn't get the memo.
Just for Haley, just because this program is just, yeah. What criteria are, is counsel basing their decision off of tonight? Or maybe it's for the city attorney as far as like why we would say yes, why we would say no? Is it just how we feel? Because that's how it feels each time we do this.
Yeah. I mean, that's up to city council to determine, right? This is based on the appeal process. And so the criteria is based on city council's determination. And I think that that was also some of the clarification that Ben had received in wanting to sort of detail and build out the program a little bit more to make, make that clear. But it's up to city council, right? This is through the appeal.
I would actually offer a slightly different answer. I think, I think the question, and not that that's necessarily wrong, because unlike most appeal sections in their code, this appeal gives you discretion after you make this decision to sort of handle it the way you want. But really, truly, it's an appeal of the decision of was the, the permit adequately, was there a reason to deny the permit based on a lack of number? But the way that code was written, it gave you discretion to then look at options to, to address it. So we didn't tie your hands to simply say, is it, is it, was it denied because there were no permits? Because I think that's a very simple sort of analysis. I think at the time, the, the program was new. This is new, still new, I would say, to some degree. I get that five years or I think it's four years may not be so new. But that's how I would answer that question is now how you make the decision if you want to take advantage of these other options, whether that be a multi-year, which staff supports here today, tonight, or granting like the longtime local is another option people have if their appeal is denied. They have to get denied first. So that's why we left it the way it is. But really, when you look at it, it's set up to be an appeal of was the decision maker, who, the person deciding whether or not to adequately deny the permit because we didn't have enough? Were they, did they have sufficient evidence to do that?
Yeah. And I, I also want to be clear that, I think you just stated this, Kate, but the program was designed so that borrowing from future years was appropriate.
Absolutely.
There's nothing wrong with that. And what the other thing is, of course, when we talked to Ben and had the work session, to eliminate the, the need for a denial before requesting a permit from future years. So we're kind of going through the last legs of the earlier process until the new code comes into effect. But.
And I, and I will say though, that there is like.
It's always set up that you could borrow from future years.
Yeah. And there is the option, right? This is like what, how y'all have been seeing it has been two of three options, right? So you can either go through the longtime local if you meet that criteria. You can go through this appeal process. Or you can, from the beginning, apply for a multi-year allotment, which is available for any GMQS allotments that we have within the code. So commercial lodging, demolition. So this is just sort of the main, like this is the one route that people have been taking if they don't meet the longtime local criteria.
And let me drill down on that. You're saying that someone could apply for future year allotments of GMQS.
Correct.
As well. So it's not unusual. But they could also be denied that we don't have enough for them this year.
Yeah, or if you determine that that's not appropriate.
Yeah. So, okay. Thank you.
No, I, I guess my point is here we are again. We've denied it before, but then came around and said yes to it. I've never really heard a council member talk so much about the criteria of the home. You know, we've had some where it's like, we're going to do electric or we're going to do more waste diversion, or we're going to do whatever. And it's just funny that, once again, I know we're changing the policy, but it comes back to us being like, how do we feel today? Were these people nostalgic folks? Should we give them a permit to demolish their home?
Have we denied any permits yet? No one has been acting arbitrarily, Sam, and you're implying that they do. This council and the past council, no one was arbitrary.
I felt like there was some arbitrary in the last council more so. I guess it's just, you know, it's just funny that it's like we denied it because they don't exist and then the processes that we give it to, and once again, we're changing it. So I am being a dead horse. I understand. I'm not, you know, this, this issue's ruffled feathers constantly, obviously.
I understand.
I mean, I'll lighten the mood by saying it was really funny when Kate was speaking and Javier's in the background as a cat in a hat with a bat. I thought that was very fun. But yeah, I mean, this property is very unique. The lot lines are very unique. It's a triangle on the road. It's so interesting that like this was, this must have been a very interesting miner's cabin. It looks like from public record, it was only sold two years ago. And this street just went through a ton of construction. And this home will have, will create a lot more construction on this street again. And yeah, I mean, to Chris's point and to the John's point of what we're trying to accomplish, it's just, I wish we again could be more targeted to what exactly we're trying to accomplish and take out the bureaucracy that doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Well, I, I hope that we're doing most of that with the, the new code changes. But I can respect your position and what you're, you know, it's, it's not a great experience for me either. But I would say there are, as John has said, a lot more issues than just the waste diversion. And if you're sitting on the Transportation Coalition or other meetings about transportation, the, the constant threat is, is, is how many more construction vehicles can, should we have every day in town? Do, do we want 30 sites under construction at one time? Do we want 50 sites? Because these, these things take years to complete. And you know, we're, we're seeing an awful lot of construction on Red Mountain, which is totally out of our. But what, what you hear from a lot of residents is do we want to blow it open again and say, hey, just start demolishing the whole town, five in a row in the same neighborhood? It doesn't matter. The market will flip. People want the houses. People want to live in Aspen. People are aging. They want to leave. You know, I, I don't know that we want to turn our town into this constant churn that we saw before. And it's, it's nice that the pandemic churn has gone away for a while. I don't know that it will not come roaring back to life with the new tax codes and tax cuts and the desirability of being in someplace safe like Aspen rather than the other cities that are being raided by the military anymore. You know?
If I may continue, I, I just counterpoints is when you look at the financials, construction is up in like an insane amount. And that's during this demo permit process. So this has not, in my opinion, slowed construction. And secondly, if we're going to say yes to all of them, again, if it was more criteria-based than us trying to control pace and scale, I feel like there are other things that we can do to do that rather than trying to limit the number of demolitions. Because Bill has said it a thousand times, 40% of a building can be just as intrusive and obstructive to the community as a demolition, sometimes even worse. So once again, I, I think there's a lot more logic and reason that can, that can go into this to try to solve the specific problems that we're trying to solve. Because I'm not for churn and churn. I'm not trying to do that. I'm not like saying this from the perspective of the construction industry. It's more from like, we've given a lot of pain to a lot of longtime locals, a lot of people. And I don't think we've been as targeted as we could be towards solving the problems that we're trying to solve.
Well, I, I respect that and I look forward to sitting down with you and talking about new control measures to control congestion and service delivery vehicles and construction vehicles in town, if you have other ideas that we can start to implement. Bill?
Thanks. Chris and Haley, sorry you have to sit through our discourse on this.
Yes.
I find it fascinating. I love public policy.
Broken rap.
Carry on. A couple of things. One, Sam, I know you didn't do this intentionally, but you, you talked about the house being a miner's cabin. It's certainly not a miner's cabin. It wouldn't be, wouldn't be eligible for demolition if it were.
John Linn's house.
And I don't say that to, to correct you, just, you know, our Victorians are.
It's a very strange lot. That's all I would say.
Our miner era stuff is protected. So I wanted to share an anecdote. I, I recently went through a demolition. It was a county demolition, but when, subject to the same green circle, green halo, I'm sorry, process that the city has now adopted. And I observed it, it was my first one that I've done, you know, full, full demolition through that process. And, and here were sort of my high-level takeaways. Probably 10 times as many people on site as there would be during a traditional demolition. You know, normally it's one or two people. One operating some kind of piece of heavy machinery and another sort of helping around the site. This was lots of people running in and out of the structure and working on the outside of the structure, sort of deconstructing materials. I get the benefit of that. I just wanted to sort of show the, the counterpoint of the added traffic and the added sort of manpower, human power on the site as a result of this. And with that sort of additional process of deconstruction came a time period that was probably five times as long as past demolitions I've done. You know, normally demolition of a house of that era has taken me in the past two months. I'm sorry, two weeks. This was three months, maybe six times as long. So just a couple of, you know, firsthand observations that I made that, that I think was worth, were worth sharing. I'm obviously not a fan of this program. I've said that a thousand times. I don't need to repeat all of my concerns and criticisms with it. But you know, John, I was ruminating on, on sort of some of your reasonings, which I've heard before also. And I'd ask you to, I'd ask everyone to consider like, are any of those things working? And if they are, let, let's do what we can to preserve those things and get rid of the rest. You know, Chris touched upon the, the waste diversion stuff. You know, that's now a part of our code that's separate from the demolition allotments. And, and I think you're probably a fan of that, John. And I think you're probably a fan of that, John, despite the anecdotes that I just shared. But the other stuff's not working. We've said yes to every single demolition allotment. So how is that working? We're not slowing the pace of construction or growth. We're having more of an impact on the community from a demolition standpoint because it takes longer and there's more traffic and there's more people there to service it. I don't think that anyone's appreciative of the bureaucratic burden that they have to go through now that they didn't have to go through prior. No one's saying, thank you for making me go through this. I can't imagine. And it comes with additional costs and time. So as we sort of, the only reason I'm saying this is in preparation for our further work sessions on this is contemplate those things, like lean into what you think is working, and let's get rid of the stuff that is not.
Thank you, Bill. Very good comments. John?
Let's see. I appreciate your comments too, Bill. I would also just like to say that, you know, your comments about how many people it takes to deconstruct a house and the impacts of that, and I understand all that, but I just feel like, shouldn't we have been doing it that way all along? Isn't that a better way of doing things than just coming in with a bulldozer and scraping and replacing structures?
The answer is, I don't really know, because I look at it from a full cycle perspective. And it's like, when I add up all the time of all those people driving to, you know, who certainly live nowhere near here, that are doing that deconstruction work and all the emissions that they're generating to get up here, and all the incremental sort of equipment and sorting and truckloads and everything else, is it really better for the environment? I don't know. Or would we be better off, like my comments last night? Would we be better off telling someone who's demolishing a house, you got to donate to plant 100 trees, or 1,000 trees, or 10,000 trees? Like what's really making a true difference to the environment? That's how I think about it.
I think these are good comments, but we're getting way off topic of the actual resolution in front of us. I don't want to go further down that road, but there's a big difference between the construction time period before certificate of occupancy as a larger part of the construction cycle than the demolition. I don't think anyone's constructing a house in two or three months-
No, certainly not.
-in this area and with the sophistication of it. But let's go back to the resolution before us tonight. We do have other items to cover. I don't want to cut anybody off if there's more comments to be made, but we-
I just wanted to respond quickly to two things to Bill and Sam. I hear you on the wanting information on this program and the facts to back up what we're doing. And I think that was a decision that we reached as a majority to run this program out. Some of the construction we're seeing in town is still pre-demolition allotment. And so the numbers aren't there to justify or not justify what's working. So that was part of my reasoning for continuing to see this program through, at least until we have more information. But I like facts just as much as you do. And Sam, the construction sales tax, I actually asked Pete and Tyler about that because I was surprised about that number. It's more complex than just construction. It's up 125% and maybe an information, some kind of explanation on that would be helpful, I think, for the public as well, because it's easy to look at that and think, this explains why we see so much construction, but the taxing is a little bit different. So.
Thank you. Let me see, we've had a significant discussion, which may take care of this item. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 145?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And to be clear, that a positive motion grants them an allotment from 2026, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Richard.
Yes. Thank you very much, and thank you, Chris and staff, for coming in and bringing this forward to us. Our last item, let me see if I can get my computer to come back up. Computer's timed off while I'm doing things and listening to the conversation. The next item is Resolution Number 148, Series of 2025. It is support of Aspen Ballot Measure 2B, which is the lumberyard financing. It's most important to note that it is not a measure that requires new taxes. It is to move forward affordable housing. And it is a rental project predominantly. After 10 years, we would have the ability to potentially sell one of the three buildings for homeownership. But I think it's important to note that there really is a shortage of rental housing as well as ownership housing. And a lot of people who come into our community are not really in a position to start competing to buy and to make a purchase. So, you know, we've been working on housing at some level for all the different types, whether it's three bedrooms, and Burlingame is more family oriented, or whether it's partnerships with the MAA for the Burlingame seasonal housing that was clearly seasonal, and this is for long-term rental and rental need. So I don't know if someone wants to make a motion, and we'll get a motion and a second on the table, and then others can add in their comments that they'd like to in support of this measure. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 148, Series of 2025, support of the Aspen Ballot Measure 2B?
So moved.
Okay, I'm going to give that to Christine, give John the second, and then we'll have council comments. Bill?
I just wanted to talk about a question that I've received on this a number of times, which is basically, in various different words, is, you know, if this gets voted down, does that mean the lumberyard is not being built? And I think the answer to that is no, that does not mean that. It just probably means it gets built in phases over time as we can afford it from the 150 fund and not all at once. I think, you know, I'm supportive of this ballot measure. I've generally supported the project. I voted no during entitlements because of the traffic light more than anything else, or really as my exclusive issue, and I still struggle with that extensively today. But I do think we need rental housing. I think it's obscenely expensive, but I'm not seeing a better route. I think I'm very appreciative that we're pursuing a public-private partnership and not going this on our own. And I'm hopeful that that process yields a better result than what we've delivered for the community in the past. But I'm of the mindset that we should approve this, we should do this bond funding, we should build this thing in one phase as opposed to three phases. And I have a tiny bit of optimism left in my body that someone will figure out a way to eliminate this traffic light.
Great. Bill, just to build off your comments and then turn it back to the rest of the group, it's worth noting we have over $28 million in land cost in there between the access of the storage units and the original $17 million purchase price that was made multiple mayors ago. So, you know, if you consider interest and then also consider the design work that's happened, the demolition phase one that has gone forward, I think the community probably has around 50, 45, $50 million into this site already, and it's not yet housing anyone. And so I think moving that forward is just really, really important. And I, sitting at the ACRA meeting this morning, listened to a Board of Realtor report, and unfortunately, I didn't bring the full paperwork back in with me, but I seem to recall they said that there's a weird discrepancy between Basalt and Carbondale, but the average monthly rent in Carbondale now is $12,000 a month, and in Basalt it's $9,000. So I don't know if they have smaller units or what the difference is, but that was the Board of Realtor kind of report. But again, none of those are rates that anyone can afford and work a middle-income job in this community. You know, you got to think about the $9,000 a month, 118,000, 108,000 a year to rent. And so we simply need more rental housing as well in our community. Other comments? Sam?
Yeah. You know, just like the demo permits and so many issues we deal with, we want two things that are contrary at the same time. And, you know, being in like campaign mode, especially for a ballot issue, Bill brought up the obvious points. And the lesser points, the things I think about are the overall Aspen ecosystem of how we want town to look in the future and how we want it to function. And, you know, in our local media, people have been critical of things like the Armory and the lumberyard. But for the Armory, they would say, how is it going to be affordable? You don't have enough workers to afford it. And then they'd go and criticize the lumberyard for being a rental project where it has to be, and we can still do an ownership project. But here we are, talking about a bond measure where if we build the lumberyard, hopefully, and hope's not a good strategy, but hopefully, the idea is that you bring a lot of the workforce up here, you increase the housing flux, especially in the rental department, and it allows things like the Armory to be a successful project. So here we are as a council trying to help the overall ecosystem of the community. Nothing's perfect. We can't make everything ownership, especially this. We can potentially on the third phase. But one of the reasons why I'm a big supporter of this is just when I look to the future of Aspen and think about how it's going to function and how the goals that we set out to do are going to work, it involves the lumberyard as a rental property, and maybe the third being ownership, and it helps other projects like the Armory and the overall ecosystem of town. And then, once again, trying to have your cake and eat it too. It is concerning, obviously, with the traffic light and the traffic going on there, but, you know, we're working on that, is really all I can say as we move forward.
You know, just to add into that, the group of consultants who work nationally, Fears and Peers, who's been part of the coalition, they were the specialists that the city hired to look at the traffic of the lumberyard. And they calculated what I could call some pretty massive CO2 savings from doing exactly what you just described, Sam, bringing people who are already working here up closer to work. And I will just deviate again, and I appreciate everyone loving me to do this, but I was invited to go to the Colorado River Valley Economic Development Strategy Release Party. And I'm not going to be able to make it because it's tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., and I might zoom in. But the town of Rifle had a participant in the Hearst seminar group that I was a part of, and they were very excited to talk about this two-year in the development of their economic development policy, so they can have good jobs in their towns and people will not be needing to commute to Aspen anymore. And so they're trying to find some real ways to bring the economic development that allows their community to work where you live and live where you work the way we're hoping to do here. But I think to have a continued reliance on a workforce that comes from 40 or 50 miles away is not a very secure idea, quite honestly. So that's another reason, you know, we're seeing 10% of our workforce from Rifle, and Rifle would like to keep them in Rifle and doing other work there. Any additional comments? No? Okay. Well, let's call the roll then, please.
Counselor Benedetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Richard.
Yes. Thank you very much. That concludes our regular agenda. We will be having an executive session, and I will let my attorney go through the citations. We will be leaving this room, so Grassroots is able to close up shop and go home, but we will not be coming back to this room to close the regular meeting.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Staff is requesting an executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, Subsection 4, Subsection A, the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, or other property interest, Subsection 4, Subsection B, conferences with an attorney for the local public body for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, Subsection 4, Subsection E, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators. The specific items of discussion involve the following: lease negotiations with Yogi's LLC regarding property at 455 Rio Grande Place, the Eisenstadt's claim for flood damage at property located at 125 Park Avenue, and the city's contract with A.D. Miller Services, Inc. for construction services involving the Powerhouse Building. This meeting will be recorded, and the recording of the executive session will be maintained by the clerk for not less than 90 days. And as you've indicated, it will be held in Electric Pass and convened from Electric Pass as well as our regular meeting. So that is my request today. I'm sorry I have to read that every time in one of these days. I think I won't even have to look at it, but thank you.
It's important to follow the protocol. And as you stated, no decisions are ever made in executive session, although we may give direction to staff. Is there a motion to go into executive session based on the citation of our attorney?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Richard.
Yes. Thank you very much. And thank you, Grassroots, and thank you, Aspen Daily News, for being in person.